Thank you very much. All right, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for 2018, 2021. Before we get started, would you please stand and let's salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Just for housekeeping, I, we do, we may, we might see Ms. Anne Marie Stronach just in a little bit, that's all. So, just for housekeeping. So, that being said, why don't we jump into scheduled items? So, our first order of business for 7:00 PM is liquor license transfer and change of ownership from DBA Crystals General Store to EKS Corporation DBA Shell Mart. As a matter of fact, just for the board, the first four scheduled items are public hearing. So, with that being said, do we have a motion to read, to waive the public reading?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
You do, second.
Okay. I keep on forgetting, we don't have to do a roll call vote because we're in session, which is wonderful. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, affirmative, 4-0. Okay, so what we're gonna do is first we'll speak with the applicants, then we always pause, we'll come back to the board, and then if there's anyone, any residents would like to come forward on behalf of the public hearing, we'll do that, we'll close the public hearing, we'll bring it back to the board and we'll go from there. So, with that being said, do we have any representatives, any applicants with us? Okay, the floor is yours. And, and just for the record, be- name, just name, please, and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Heaven Peter, 28 Jills Way, Tuxbury, Mass., 01876.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Pat Patel. I'm living 1360 Main Street, apartment 303, Tuxbury, Mass.
Okay. All right, the floor is yours. So, for the board, you just wanna tell what, what are you looking to do as applicants, please?
It's just transfer the license and trying to bring the business and things like that.
Okay.
So, we've been running that gas station-
Yeah.
-from over two and a half years, and our company owns that location for more than around 10 years, and we are planning to get beer wine license transfer to the gas station location, and we have enough experience to do that.
Do we have representative from Crystals-
No.
No.
Okay. So, just for the record, and just for the residents watching, we're gonna take, we're looking for a transfer from the Crystals General Store to 365 Main Street.
That's right.
Okay. So, at the end of the day, essentially, we're taking a licensed beer, wine, beer, and malt, we're looking to transfer that, AKA, take that away, so the Crystal General Store will no longer have that license, and it'll be potentially transferred to you all.
That's right.
Okay. So, with that being said, like I said, we're gonna, let's deliberate from the board, they're gonna have questions, and then we'll, we'll pause, we'll see if there's any residents that would like to speak, we'll close the public hearing, and just go from there. So, let's open it up to the board. How about Ms. Swelman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've looked at your application earlier this week, thank you, there's a lot of information in it, I think it was complete. What's the status on the gas station right now? Are you selling anything at the gas station? I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah, like cigarette, soda, groceries.
Okay.
So, we are selling all the general merchandise product.
Yep.
So, we are just planning to add beer wine portion to that.
Okay.
And our plan is to create a, like, separate environment, basically, from soda, so like, we are planning to do another separate walk-in cooler just for beer, so it's not gonna mix with general merchandise. We don't wanna cut down our sales that we already doing.
Okay.
So, we just wanna add a few products to our line.
Okay. I don't have any other questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. How about Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just, gentlemen, do you have experience with the sale of liquor?
Yes.
And you haven't been selling there, but in other locations?
Yeah, so I personally, I have like a few other business in different other towns-
You do?
-that we do business. Like, we've been doing this for 15 years.
Okay, great. So, I'm thinking back, it's been a few years, but I know that, at least here in our community, there was a stretch where there was a fair number of sales to underage residents or young people. And I know that the town took a lot of effort to educate the business owners, to make sure that they're doing all the right things. So, can you just describe, like, what process does it verify people's age and all of that? Just to assure us that, you know, you're, you're on top of that?
Yeah, yeah, sure, and I'll be honest, I own this gas station, 1220 Main Street, petrol gas station, right? Due to my employee, one of the issue we had probably two and a half years ago, three years ago, they sell it to minor for tobacco. I take it very seriously from that point, and it's been two and a half years, everything's working smooth. What we did to correct that, we put our system with new P U R system, that when something overaged, like 21, like cigarette or tobacco or liquor, we ring into the register as soon as that notice pops up, that reminds each and every employee to they need to verify their ID. And without the verification, they're not able to move or do the transaction. Along with that, we always train them and we hire them, that this is a very serious issue in all the communities, not only Tuxbury, but we take it very seriously, and I'm 14 years, no A B C C violation, so-
Good for you.
That's, that speaks itself.
Yep. So, I know there's a reliance now on a lot of the technology, so you're using some of that, which is, is good to hear. So, thank you.
And sometimes, like, I have another store in Cambridge, that we have a lot of issues with the fake IDs because of the kids and stuff, so we bought a system that cost us almost $3,000, that connected with the good amount of servers, so as soon as I put ID, I get clear notification that this is generated by this state, barcode, or all that detailed information. So, where we required, we definitely spent that money. Tuxbury, I don't know if we have to go that route right now, maybe if we encounter similar issue, we might go that one out too.
Okay. Thank you for that. Just one last question, and I'm looking for general information, not specific to your organization, but I think anecdotally, we hear that it's hard to find new employees, that a lot of people have vacancies. I see you nodding. So, so as, as that is a clear problem, right?
It is, it is.
Do you find, do you find, do you have to spend more time teaching and training your new employees around this process?
Of course, along with that, teaching is, we have no problem, whatever hours we need to spend, but in today's time, we don't even, it's very tough to find a person who wanna work. Due to a lot of issues going around, they get money from government or whatever reason, nobody wants to work, so that's a big issue. I hope that resolves soon, but that affects our ability to work more.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate your answers to my questions. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. How about, uh, Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no questions, everything appears to be in order, and I'm good.
Very good. So, Ms. Stronach, we're just in the, thank you, we did expect you, so thank you. We're just on item number one for the agenda, and we're gonna open up to the public, it's a public hearing, so we just have a question on the applicants as far as the liquor license transfer from Crystals to Shell.
Yep, I have reviewed it and I have no questions, thank you.
Okay. And I think, just for me shortly, I think Mr. Johnson summarizes, there's a saying in Spider-Man, "With great power comes great responsibility," and the same thing as being a steward to this license, you know, we take it very seriously, and to Mr. Johnson's point, you know, always doing the right thing and training, training, training your employees, there's no excuse if your employees aren't trained, but again, it seems like you covered it, and you're very thorough, and you do have experience in this, in the industry of selling wine and beer, so I thank you for that, so. Okay, well, I'm gonna pause here, because it's a public hearing, I'm gonna open it up. Do we, first off, do we have any residents either in-house and/or like to speak for item agenda one? Okay, I'm getting a, no, so, at this point, I look for a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, before I do, may I ask one question?
Of course, please.
Through you to the town manager, are there any departmental concerns with this transfer at all, to your knowledge, Mr.?
None.
None. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Aye.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by by saying aye?
Aye.
5-0. The public hearing's closed. So, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve the location change and transfer of the licensing question.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, and unanimous 5-0. Congratulations, and thank you very much. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving right along. Item number two, we have National Grid conduit petition. So, we actually have two in the same location, we're gonna treat them one by one, just in case, because it does stretch a little chunk of land, so that's how we're gonna take them order. So, do we, first off, it's, this is, again, is a public hearing, do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, 5-0, so the public, again, same deal here, we'll, I think we have a representative from National Grid, we'll deliberate on the board, then we'll go to the public, then we'll kinda close it out and make our recommendations. So, with that being said, do we have a representative from National Grid? Uh-oh.
Nope.
Nobody called in? Okay.
I thought I saw a few folks on, no, Jason? Okay, well, I think that's rather important, so why don't we go ahead, and let's just wait. Listen, fair enough, it's wait, you know, it's only 15 pass, we're in good shape, so why don't we just kinda hold tight on item number two at 7:05, and item number three, that's 7:10, and we'll revisit it. So, I think this brings us right down to the 7:15, I think we're in good shape to proceed, right on schedule. So, same deal here, this is a public hearing, so do I have a motion to waive the public reading? Do I have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. So, do we have any representatives for the public hearing to lay out Robbie's way, Robbie Terrace Way? Now, before we proceed, this was a matter with the planning board last evening, now, although with the board, authoritative board, the planning board did vote, and affirmative to accept, and they also waived to release two particular bonds. Again, that's neither here nor there, but I think it's important for this board, and the residents understand that we, you know, that the planning board did vote affirmative to move forward. So, Mr. Montori, do we have, I don't know if Mr. Sadwick was gonna join us, but do we have?
No, I have to take care of this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So, the, as you mentioned, the planning board voted last night to approve the Robbie Terrace Way. This has been reviewed by all of the town departments, the town engineer has signed off on it on behalf of DPW. Tonight, in this, and we've been through this before with other road acceptances, at this public hearing, the Board of Selectmen need to vote to approve the layout and acceptance of Robbie Terrace Way. As presented in your packet, there is a map on file with the town clerk, which will be available at least seven days prior to special town meeting, which is October 5th, 2021, and if the board does vote to accept the layout and approve Robbie Terrace Way as a, there is a document for the chair to sign.
And before we just open it up to the board and to the public, even if we vote affirmative here, I'm just, you know, just from history, at the end of the day, if there are abutters or residents at town meeting, you know, they can potentially get up and speak on behalf of the article that we're gonna present because we're moving it forward, is that accurate?
Correct. We've had situations where the planning board voted to accept, the Board of Selectmen have voted to accept, and town meeting voted not to.
Okay, fair enough. So, why don't we bring it to the board, in the same deal as the public hearing, that we'll open up to the residents? So, let's start from the board, questions, concerns for this particular item?
Mr. Chairman, I-
Please.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, my question is, this, this, the layout, the geography of, of this street is on a hill, or it's near a hill. Many of the properties downhill from these parcels are experiencing any stormwater runoff issues. If you've heard of anything, I know it's been here for a little while, this was an issue that came up with a previous road acceptance that was rejected by town meeting, so I'm just curious if there's any feedback from conservation or other departments?
So, we've heard no issues in regard to drainage, the town engineer would have flagged that as an issue before, signed off on or accepted, so in this case, we've heard no issues in regard to that.
And abutters were notified?
I believe the-
There's no abutter list here?
I'm sure abutters were notified, especially for last night's hearing, but not enough tonight's.
Okay.
Just for the record, I did see, I believe I saw-
Yeah, I believe the abutters are notified.
For-
Those are the signatures for town, for the moran article.
Mr. Chairman, in Mr. Sadwick's cover memo, it indicates that the abutters were provided notice.
Okay, perfect.
But I didn't see the abutter list. All right, that's great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Swelman. Ms. Stronach?
I have no questions, it all seems in order, and I am grateful for your update on the planning board, thank you.
Very good. How about Mr. Johnson?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mackey?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, same deal on my side, it was affirmative across the board on the planning board, and again, if, if there's no abutters or residents, we can always bring up, God forbid we miss an issue, we can always bring it up during town meeting, which is October Tuesday, so. With that being said, I'm gonna pause, let's open it up. Jason, do we have anyone, any residents on the line? How about any, any residents would like to speak in house? Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. What is the pleasure of the board for public hearing to lay out Robbie Terrace Way?
Mr. Chairman, are we looking for a recommendation to town meeting, or are we looking for approval from the board?
I believe it's approval so that-
You need to make, you need to vote to approve the layout and acceptance of Robbie Terrace Way.
Okay. I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the layout and accept, what did it-
Acceptance, yep.
Accept the map, what did you say? Accept the street, I'm sorry, I apologize, of Robbie Terrace Way.
Okay, I have a motion?
Sorry.
Nope, all good, all good. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying yea, aye.
Aye.
Yea and aye, almost the same, right?
It's spelled the same. Different letters, the same letters, different order.
Motion carries 5-0. Okay, very good.
It's like my first day.
Yeah, again, still getting used to this versus the WebEx session, so it's all good. How about, I'm gonna go back to Jason. Jason, do we have national, any representation from National Grid? Okay, seeing none. That brings us to the residence portion, do we have any residents that would like to speak? Okay, all good. Jason, do we have any residents, do we have any residents on the line?
No, we're not doing that virtual component.
Yep.
Eliminated the virtual component for residents.
Okay, well, thank you for the heads up, okay. All right, very good, then let's just keep on moving along to new business. So, on the new business, we have Jones Farm, 100 Arnie Martel Way sewer agreement. So, Mr. Montori, you wanna give us a little bit background on this particular item?
Yeah, from what we understand, Jones Farm is gonna be sold, and the sewer agreement needs to be transferred to the new owner. They're seeking board approval to transfer this agreement to, just wanna get the name right, K A G LLC, as the new, I guess you would say, owners of Jones Farm, you know, who will be responsible for the sewer agreement. It seemed, everything seems to be in order, the only thing I would ask is that the board, in their vote, if so, choose, if you so choose to approve the transfer, to ensure that all indemnification and insurance bonds that are outlined in Section 8 of the agreement be provided to the town prior to or at closing on the sale.
Okay. I might have jumped the gun. Jason, do we have someone on the, do we have someone on the line that's gonna represent this? Okay. Please, you can let the applicant through, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Joshua Fox, can you hear me okay?
Yep, perfect, my friend, yep.
Oh, excellent, thank you. So, my name is Joshua Fox from Rollins, Rollins &amp; Fox Attorneys at Law, and I do represent Jones Farm LLC, which is the entity that owns the residences at Jones Farm. And, and yes, Arnie Martel is the, the manager and the principal, and he's in the process of selling the project. But the name of the entity, the purchaser, is not K A J LLC, that was a former owner of the property, also controlled by Arnie Martel. The name of the new purchasing entity is Metropolitan Capital Group LLC, or their nominee. And I hear you loud and clear with what you said with respect to Section 8, that the new comply with and show the town that it is in compliance with Section 8.
Okay. Since we have Josh on the phone, I'll pause, let's continue with the board. How about Ms. Swelman, questions?
My only question is, does this, is there a substantive change in the sewer agreement between this, the existing agreement and this new agreement?
No, there is, it's the same agreement, you're just changing the owner's name.
Just changing the name, okay. I don't have any, I don't have any other questions, although I think the ownership is interesting, it's Metropolitan Capital Group or their nominee, Mr. Fox?
Well, yes, if I may, we've got a purchase and sale agreement, and in these commercial real estate transactions, typically there's a managing entity that enters into many purchase and sale agreements, and then when we finally get around to the closing, they form a new LLC, a sole purpose entity, to own and control the particular project. So, unfortunately, I don't know the name of the, the exact name of the entity who's going to be acquiring this, this property.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Thank you. How about Ms. Stronach?
Jane just asked my question, so, thank you, Jane.
Mr. Johnson?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
How about Mr. Mackey?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And just like the board, I mean, I read through it, it seems to me like a formality, Mr. Montori, more than anything, have we done this in the past for other applicants?
I haven't been a part of any here, I've been a part of them in other communities, but I know in the past, we've had agreements that have had switched hands prior, prior to my tenure as town manager. It's not uncommon, and as long as they fulfill all the requirements of the current agreement that we vetted through with town council, DPW, and the current owner, and they abide by what we need in Section 8, we should, we should have no issues.
Okay, very good. And I did happen to see Mr. Johnson's signature, John Hancock, on there way back when, so, you know, just for the record. All right, with that being said, this is not a public hearing, thank you, Mr., anything else on your side, Mr. Fox?
No, thank you very much.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure, what is the pleasure of the board?
I just have one more question-
Sure, please, sure.
-for you, to the manager. Is this agreement fitting volume and the usage that they're doing? We haven't had any issues with-
Haven't had any.
Maintenance of any sewer blockages or any, anything going on over there, this affects, okay, thank you. That was, that was my last question.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Okay. Bring it back to the board, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll offer a motion to, I guess, authorize the town manager to execute a revised sewer and water connection agreement, the parties aforementioned, subject to compliance with the indemnification provisions and insurance provisions cited in the agreement, Section 8.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Swelman. All in favor, please signify by by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries 5-0. Ask again, Jason, but if the folks from National Grid do hop on, you can maybe just give me a thumbs up. All right, very good, thank you. Okay. All right, moving right along, new business, we have a new building commissioner, Mr. Montori, how long is Mr. Moxie, Bertinazzi, did I get it right?
Yep, he's been on since June.
June, okay. So, we have a new building commissioner, and keep me honest, prior to that, we always had a representation with the building commissioner on the zoning bylaw committee, is that accurate?
That is correct.
So-
And the current opening is because of the retirement of the previous building.
Very good. And Mr. Johnson, any, I know Mr. Johnson, I think you're leading that committee now on behalf of the select board, so any, any questions, comments on your side?
No, only that the committee met last week, and the committee's interest, and by extension, the community's interest to fill that one position. We currently have six members, we'd like to make sure we have seven, and to your point, the building commissioner previously was on the committee, and that knowledge of the enforcement side of the code is valuable to the committee, so I'd urge my colleagues to support the appointment.
Okay, perfect. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, to appoint our building commissioner, Mark Bertinazzi, to the zoning bylaw committee.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous 5-0. Okay, so the next, actually, we're gonna move right along, two boards and committees. So, here's the deal, just for the board and residents alike, so we, we fulfilled the majority, we kinda left a little bit of buffer, so some folks weren't replying back to us, we didn't know if they wanna stay on their respective boards or committees, but now we're finally at the point to kinda get locked and loaded and fill all the boards and committees. We've had a number of applicants that have actually submitted in May, and June, and July, and August, so it's now our time to review all the different applicants and their resumes, and make some nominations for the open boards and committees. So, I think, I do believe I covered, I covered everything. So, what I'd like for the board to consider is, we have a number of applicants, and I know some of us represent various boards and committees, you know, representing the select board, so let's just open it up for food, for, on all the candidates and applicants, let's see which ones we can appoint and nominate to the relative boards and committees that have vacancies, and let's see where it goes. I do believe, based on the applicants, not only the applicants and what they've wrote in their resumes, I think we can make some intelligent decisions and fill almost all the vacancies, and if we come to like a standstill, or we're unable to appoint or nominate someone, then we can take a step back for that particular board and committee, huddle, you know, and just pivot. So, I think I covered everything that I wanted to share, or just give the board a little bit of direction. So, with that being said, let's open it up, I just wanna, bear with me here? So, why don't we, why don't we start at the tippity, tippity top, and let's go to Economic Development Committee on this particular committee, I think, Mr. Mackey? And doesn't mean Mr. Mackey has to make a nomination, or Ms. Swelman, anyone can make a nomination. You know, you might be more familiar with a particular applicant because they might have reached out to you, or they expressed interest in a particular committee, and I'm just using this one as an example. We have three seats, seat eight, we have an associate member, and we have associate member number two. So, essentially, three vacancies, I believe the term is one year, and they all expire June 30th, 2022. So, I'll pause, and I'll see, do we have any nominations for the Economic Development Committee?
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Timothy Sweat for seat eight on the Economic Development Committee.
If you need a second, I will.
Okay, bear with me, I'm just gonna try to take, and I'll watch the video after to write it down too, if I missed it. So, I have a, I have a motion, and I have- For Mr. Timothy Sweet?
Sweat. Swett.
Swett.
Yep. Mr. Johnson, seconded it.
Okay, okay, all who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Nomination carries five oh. Do I have a second nomination for the Economic Development Committee?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Danielle Corsino.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries five oh. And, okay, I'm going to, let's assign Danielle to associate member number one, and last but not least, do I have a nomination for associate member number two? I'd like to make a nomination, if I could.
Of course you can.
Okay. I'll make a nomination to nominate Mr. Mike Krappman for associate member two. If many of the folks recall, Mike was on the particular board, has expressed interest on the particular board, and does have experience in this particular committee, specifically around the element, economic development of this town, so I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All who's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, okay. Motion carries five oh, so Mr. Krappman will round out associate member number two. Okay, so now we have the local, our local housing partnership, and Ms. Tronick, I believe you are representing for that particular committee?
I do, and I would like to nominate Mr. Jacob Brothers.
I'll second that.
Okay, and for this, for the committee, we have one open seat, Seat 8, correct?
Correct.
And same, same deal, one, one year, okay, so I have.
It expires on June 20.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry.
No, very good, okay. That being said, we have a motion and a second. What's the pleasure of the board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Mr. Brothers, is unanimous, five oh. So we're going to move to the Massachusetts Cultural Council. Now, for this particular board, this is a pretty big board for all the local towns and communities within the state of, state of Massachusetts. We actually have nine seats, and if my math is right, we have seven, we have nine seats and seven applicants. And this one here, there's, for this particular committee, I think they need, they, keep me honest, I think three times a year, three times a year, and the, and this committee's very important to get grants and stuff like that, kind of, that's why it's a large committee, they put together wants and needs for Tewksbury, there's a lot of money out there within the Massachusetts Cultural Council, so it might, pretty important when they can get some nice grants for the town, you know, across the board, for open space, monuments, and the list goes on and on and on, just to kind of highlight what this committee's all about. So, for me, I think it's a no-brainer, having six, six, seven nominees and nine seats. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, is it possible to accept the slate?
I don't see why not.
Not the slate?
I think it's a.
You making that as a motion?
Yes, sir, I am making that in the form of a motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All who's in favor, please signify by saying aye. The motion carries. And what we'll do, we don't have to put the names in there, but.
Two open seats.
Yeah, there's two remaining seats there, so we can always repost, but, but that's pretty good, we have this significant, massive body, so looking forward to these new folks and seeing what they can do for the community.
Mr. Chairman, just note for the record that those terms run through June 30th, 24.
Good call, Mr. Johnson, those are, that's probably the asterisk here, a three-year term, because they don't meet as often, and they have to get their feet wet to understand the process and what it's all about, so good stuff there, okay. Okay, so the next committee that we're going to appoint is, we have the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee, one seat, same deal, one-year term, expires June 30th, 2022. This one's a little more challenging, we had five applicants, very strong. A lot of the applicants do kind of list what they want to do for committees, they want to do open space first, as far as their order of preference, so we do take that in consideration when we go through all the different applicants, and try to line up the applicants to where they want to have a choice first. Sometimes it doesn't work out that way, but again, just for the residents, that's kind of what we do collectively as a board. So, I'll pause, do we have any nomination, do we have a nomination for the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee?
Mr. Chairman, I will offer a nomination for John Buckley.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, all who's in favor.
June 30th, 2022.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tronick. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Okay, next order of business is the Public Events and Celebration Committee. This one here, we have, one, two, five seats and a number of candidates, same deal, one year term, expires June 30th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Arfa Akbar, I hope I spelled that correctly, Akbar, to this committee.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Do I have a second, all who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Barbara Chapi to the Events Committee, to June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Motion's second, all who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries five oh.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion for Erin Kniff to Public Events, June 30th, 2022.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a second, Mr. Johnson. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Tronick's on her roll, proceed.
I'd like to make a motion to, does someone else have any?
No, you're good.
Renee Rider.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh, and just, well, just, just for a quick check here, so we have one, two, three, four, and then this last but not least will recognize this final appointment for Seat Number Three.
I would also like to make a motion for Kara Senat.
Second.
Motion and a second, all who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries five oh. Okay, very good. Next order of business is the Tewksbury Beautification Committee. We have three seats, same deal, one-year term, expires June 30th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Corey Sherbino to the Beautification Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. That was for Seat Two.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to appoint Maria Sandra Schramm.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, all who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries, and last but not least, Seat Number 10.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Ashley Linterna to Seat 10.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, okay. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that rounds that committee out for Seat Number 10, moving right along. We have one resident at large for the Tewksbury North and Trey Hand Reuse Committee, I'm representing the board on that particular committee, so same deal here, one year, expires June 30th, 2022. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Kayla Biagioni Smith to the resident at large position.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second, all who's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 So that rounds out that particular committee. The next committee is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This would be an associate member, one year expires June 30th, 2022, and I do believe, we had two candidates, but I do believe Danielle was just appointed to the Economic.
Development.
Development Committee, which would leave Mr. Joseph Carey as a candidate. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Joseph David Carey to the Zoning Board of Appeals Associate Member.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries five oh. And last but not least, oh, actually, I'm going to strike this one for the record, so we have the zoning bylaw committee, however, in our vote to a new building inspector, this seat is essentially filled, so we have no vacancies in that particular committee. So, keep me honest, team, I think that is, that concludes the appointments for, for all the boards and committees.
That was made in record time.
And I just want to say again, just think about this, these are all volunteers, all volunteers, I always say, just like Little League coaches and Pupwana coaches, and all volunteers for the community, so it's pretty remarkable that we have so many applicants to roll up their sleeves and work for the community and give it their all. So, I will say this, because of some of the applicants that we appointed, some of the, some of the applicants put their request in a little time ago, they may or may not still be interested, but we'll have the town clerk and Janine, we're going to reach out to them, and if they're not interested, or they moved along, then we'll just revisit those folks that don't, don't want to, you know, no longer have interest in that, those boards and committees, but all good, all good, and again, I can't thank the folks that represent ongoing the committees, and the folks that, the new folks, a lot of new, what's the saying, a lot of new blood, pretty cool, so, good stuff, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't know that it requires a motion, but the last time we did appointments, we did have a tag on there that they needed to be sworn in within, I think it was 30 days or so, and, and obviously, the open meeting law requirements need to be met as far as the trainings and things, so I would just ask if we could attach to the correspondence that's sent to each of those individuals we appointed tonight, remind them of those obligations.
Yeah, good, some type of sand clock on it, so do, do we need to make that in a motion, or can we just work with the town clerk for the, like, let's say 30 days?
We'll, we'll add it to the, when we send out the appointment slip, I think this is something the board voted on to do at the last.
It's like a policy.
Something we're going to add to all appointments that need to be sworn in within 30 days.
All right, very good, okay, so, thank you, Mr. Johnson, anything else from the board around the, the boards and committees?
Mr. Chairman, just to, again, thank all the applicants, there's a lot of great people that we have, and we have, we'll have more opportunities in the future, so stay tuned, I'm sure there'll be more openings. Very fortunate to have such a large pool of volunteers to, to work with.
And I always say, just to repeat myself, you don't need a title to be a leader, you don't need to tell, you can always be a leader, so if the applicants weren't appointed, boards and committees as a resident, and go to every meeting, and still be, you know, a deep part of any board and committee, if you so choose. Okay, very good. So, moving right along, we're moving right along, Mr. Montori, Town Manager section, please.
Before, is anyone here from National Grid to?
No, okay.
To the, to the board, it was, just to go back to National Grid, because I know any delay holds up potential residents or work being done. Did you want to move forward with them without National Grid, are they that straightforward in your mind?
I thought they were straightforward, I mean, so basically, for the residents, we're talking about kind of a new, new, new street, if you would, Grammy's Way, and extends out to Livingston, right off of Livingston, a new development. My only concern was, well, let's do this, are there any residents or anyone on the line, Jason, because remember, both of these are public hearings, we're putting in new conduits, underground wires, and it kind of extends on the two parcels within Grammy's Way, and for the residents, it extends out to Livingston, and it's quite a few feet, all on the ground, good stuff, but are there any residents in-house or on the line, and, and to speak about, or have any questions about the National Grid conduit for Livingston Way and Grammy's Way? Okay, so let's talk as a board, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable, I always have questions, I'm always nervous about the abutters, because that's why we have these hearings, sometimes an abut is going to lose a sidewalk, lose a tree, or they're going to put something on their land which is like, you know, just is not good for the resident, but if we have no abutters, I'm, how does the board want to proceed? I'm a little bit more comfortable, but, Mr. Montori, if we do vote these in, tomorrow, you know, from an abut, or even from a new homeowner, say, wait a minute, you know, this isn't right, because you're infringing or not infringing, because we do get those calls, that's why we have these hearings, what, what, what would we do in that case?
We would, in, in any case, if that happened, no matter what, when this, when these are voted, we would ask National Grid to hold off until we work out the details, and they're always good like that.
So it's not signed in, does it sign in?
And this is a new development, so this shouldn't be that big of a problem. So if the board wanted to, you'd have to take each one individual as a public hearing and deal with, deal with each one separate, you know, separate public hearing, you need to deal with for Livingston, and then a separate for Grammy's Way. It's up to the board, if, if you're not comfortable, we can wait, and they can reissue and come into a future meeting.
Well, to your point here, I know this stuff's always backed up, and typically, we're, you know, two-vote affirmative, because this sometimes can take anywhere between two to 12 months to get rocking and rolling, I know it's a new development, so what's the, what's the, what's, what's the board think? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have no issue, I think we should move forward with it, all of the maps and the documentation indicate that the conduit is within the parcel, it's not on the property line with the abutters or anything, that's all contained within the, within the street development, so I'm fine with going forward, I'm comfortable as well.
Okay, so, Mr. Montori, do we have to be super official and open up, close the public hearing and do all the right things?
Correct.
So with that being said, why don't we jump to item number two, it's National Grid conduit petition for Livingston Street, it is a public hearing, so I look for a motion to waive the public reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All who's in favor, signify by saying aye. So let's, any residents, any residents, Jason, or in-house, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public?
So moved.
So I have a motion and a second, all who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve petition number 30414537, as delineated in the information presented to the board.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, all who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, five oh. All right, 710 National Grid poll petition, this one's for Grammy Way, do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, all who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What's the pleasure of the board for Grammy's Way?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, Mr. Montori, the petition number is the same as the previous petition number, is that a scrivener's error, or is that, is it actually the same petition?
I think it's the same petition.
Just two different hearings?
Yeah, because I think Grammy's Way had two particular components, I think they listed Livingston as one particular component, okay, yep.
It's all the same petition. All right, so then I would make a motion that we approve petition 30414537 from National Grid for the portion of underground conduit on Grammy's Way, as delineated in the document.
I have a second, and I have a second, all who's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries five oh. And again, Mr. Montori, let's stay close to this one, and if anything jumps out at us in any way, shape, or form, and maybe we should have put a little caveat in there that you will reach out, because who knows, they could have jumped on us, and you know something, there's an issue with it, I, they probably have it, but, Mr. Montori, if you could just reach out and just make sure that they're comfortable, the board approved, and see if there's any curveballs associated with these two particular line items.
Absolutely.
All right, very good. All right, Mr. Montori, the floor is back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of items, and then I just want to go through a couple of announcements that are not listed in my report on the agenda. First, on the report, I mean, on the agenda, Al Rego is the new town accountant, he took over for Pam Alfano, who retired, Al started in the beginning of August, and to respond to and handle public records within the accounting office, I need to have him appointed as a record access officer, similar to what other department heads are, and he will take the place of Pam Alfano, in her capacity as town accountant, the record access officer for the town, for the town accountant's office, so I'd ask the board to make that appointment.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second, all who's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Second item I have on the agenda are two invoices for Town Council, the first from July 16th, 2021, through July 31st, 2021, in the amount of $2,720.60, and I'd recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, do I have a second? All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Then for August 1st through August 15th, $3,017.50.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the second invoice, all who's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Aye. And, uh, motion carries. All right, just for the residents, we often get town council invoices, because a lot of folks do ask me. And those are particular, um, let's call them lawyers, working for the town, and we budget accordingly. And I can honestly say, and I think, um, Ms., uh, Mr. Johnson and Ms. Stronach can vouch for this, where Mr. Montori has a lot of experience. Mr. Steve Sadwick has a lot of experience, as do our department heads. So within this community, we do save a bunch of pennies because of their tribal knowledge, where we don't have to access, uh, or even have a lawyer, uh, present for every meeting. And I think that's important for the folks, residents, to understand. So when they say, well, how come you keep on just saying yes to these line items? Um, you know, that's what these are all about. And I get, I do get questions on them frequently. So there you go. So.
And, and the budget is approved at town meeting each year for, and, um, we've stayed within that budget over the last few years, so.
Yeah. And, and like I said, if you look around other towns and committees, and I know we don't, you know, this is Tuxbury, that's what we care about, but you'd be very surprised how many select board meetings have, you know, not only one or two, two lawyers associated with it. So we do, uh, we do very good in that area. Of course, we leverage them, we need them, but I think it's important for the residents to, um, get, have that insight. All right, Mr. Montori, what else on the floor?
A few more things, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Um, I just want to, um, uh, let the board know and the residents know that, uh, the census data is out. Um, we'll be getting more official information, a more official presentation to us of the data. But I just want to let the, um, board and the community know that, uh, the 2020 population, uh, increased from 2010, uh, by 2,300 people. It's an increase of 8.2%. In 2020, in 2010, our population was 28,961. Uh, and in 2020, uh, it's 31,342. And that's within of about, uh, 1,000 residents compared to what the annual census is that the town clerk does. And the reason for that, um, the federal census may get just more of a response than our annual census does, especially from rentals, where it's more of a transient population. Um, so that's an 8.2% increase, uh, just of note. Um, and for housing units, uh, there was an increase of 1,291 housing units in town. That was an increase of 6.8%. Uh, in 2010, we had 10,48 units, and in 2020, we have 12,139 units. So, um, not exact, but there was a, there was a similar, uh, you know, then a couple of percent increase in the housing units in the community. Lastly, uh, and at a future board meeting, once we get past town meeting and we get our formal data, uh, the town clerk will come to the Board of Selectmen, uh, with a presentation, um, that we plan on adding a precinct, uh, to the community, um, right now. And we'll be renumbering that, those precincts, um, one through nine, uh, instead of what we have today, which is one and 1A, two and 2A, three and 3A, and four and 4A. Um, and we, uh, have to, uh, add a precinct, because now you cannot have, um, more than 4,000, um, residents, uh, in a precinct. Properly and equally proportion the districts as much as you can. So there's going to be some work to do, uh, on the, uh, town clerk's part, uh, with the assistance of the Secretary of State. Uh, but she plans to come in, Denise Graff, the town clerk, plans to come in to present, uh, the new precincts and what needs to be done, uh, at a future meeting, uh, probably later October, early November. So that's, that's just it on the data for the census. I just want to let everyone know. Any information that we have that's, that we feel is, uh, can go up on the website, we'll put on the website. Uh, but that's, uh, some information I wanted to pass on. The other thing I want to mention in regard to water, a couple of things, over the next eight to 10 weeks, um, we're going to be doing our hydrant flushing throughout the town at various, uh, parts of town, weather dependent. Um, we should wrap up sometime in, uh, late, to late November. This is when we normally flush our hydrants to, uh, to clean out the water system. Um, we've, uh, sent information out, uh, to residents, uh, using social media, using our signboards. Um, there is no strict sequencing or schedule to the flushing, so, uh, residents may notice varying pressure in their water, uh, some brown water, because when we flush hydrants, we, um, stir up the sediment, uh, within the pipes. Uh, if anyone has any issues with, uh, um, discolored water, uh, because they've, uh, ran a wash and, uh, has, have issues with their clothes, they can contact the DPW, and we have, uh, an additive that will resolve that for them. Uh, but if anybody has any questions or concerns, um, go to the website. There'll be information on the flushing program, or they can call the, uh, the town, uh, town manager's office with any questions. But that's going to be happening over the next eight to 10 weeks. So if you see water running out of hydrants, uh, that's what we're doing. Uh, also in regard to, uh, water, um, we, uh, received notification that we had a maximum, uh, contaminant level increase, uh, for trihalo-methanes, methanes, uh, which are normally known as TTHMs. Um, we exceeded, uh, the threshold, uh, that we're allowed to have, um, uh, when we test for this contaminant. Uh, the threshold is 80 pots per billion. Uh, it's averaged over a 12-month period. Uh, we exceeded that. Uh, we are at 88 pots per billion. Uh, so we exceeded it, but not by much. Uh, there is no, uh, emergency or any issues, uh, that need to be dealt with, uh, in regard to the drinking water. Uh, we made adjustments at the treatment plant for, um, uh, increased, uh, treatment process, uh, to address it. Uh, and we'll continue to do that, um, as long as the Department of Environmental Protection tells us we need to. Um, and a notice was sent out to all the residents this week, uh, notifying them of the issue, uh, what, um, what they should do, uh, what does this mean, um, and what's being done to address it. Um, the, the reason for the, um, the issue, uh, it's because of the, uh, quality of water in the Merrimack River, um, especially because of the high amount of rainfall that we've received, uh, this past, over the past few months. The, um, the, the type of water and the, uh, and chemical makeup of the Merrimack River, when it, uh, comes into our treatment, um, causes the high T, uh, TTHM. So, um, we're aware of it. Uh, violation isn't, uh, that high over what's allowed. Uh, so there really is no emergency. It's not an issue of boiled water and things like that. So, um, they, we test for this quarterly, so we are well aware of it, and we're ahead of it, um, as much as we can be. So, um, that, that's something I want to bring to everyone's attention. And then finally, um, the topic that has probably been talked about the most in the community and will continue to be for some months to come is the 40B Hanover, uh, 40B project at Ames Pond that Hanover's, uh, proposing. Uh, Hanover submitted application to mass housing on Friday. Uh, Mass Housing has sent the town a letter indicating that they received the application. Uh, Mass Housing has indicated to the town that they have, that we have until October 13th, uh, to provide input, uh, to the, regarding the application to mass housing. Uh, Mass Housing will review Hanover's application, uh, and their, uh, review involves an evaluation of the site, design concept, financial feasibility of the proposal, and the appropriate, uh, appropriateness of the proposal in relation to local housing needs and strategies. Um, they, uh, will seek input from the town boards, uh, town officials, and any interested parties. Um, and again, the deadline to submit the, um, the, uh, input and comments is 13th, uh, 2021. Uh, when we were told, even prior to being told, uh, the application was being submitted, uh, the department heads were already preparing and reviewing, uh, the potential development. Uh, now that they have the application, which I believe is somewhere, uh, around 90, 92 pages, um, they'll, uh, have more information to review. Uh, it's been sent to all of the, all of the department heads for review. It's been sent to the school department, uh, the school superintendent and business manager to review. Uh, it's been sent to the planning board, zoning board of appeals, board of health, local housing partnership, conservation commission, uh, school committee, uh, and the open space and recreation committee for review and comment. Uh, I've asked everyone to have their comments back by September 22nd, which will give us time to compile a letter. Framework of the letter ready to go, um, based on our, uh, you know, from having gone through this before, uh, so we understand what we need to present.
I'm sorry, Mr. Montori, um, just a little bit loud.
Can you please repeat what you said, because this is very important to me, and I couldn't hear one word you said.
Okay. Where's your, maybe start from the beginning?
I would prefer that I hear.
Okay. So.
It might help if you come up closer too, if you don't mind. Absolutely.
I'll go right.
Just to make sure we get it.
I can hear you, Mr. Grant.
Did everyone on the board hear what I said?
It's tough to hear.
Yeah, it's a tough, it's a tough acoustic.
I'm really upset about a very important thing for me and Ames Pond, et cetera.
That's, that's exactly, that's exactly why I was talking about it now. So I don't want to get emotional. We're working, we're working.
I tried to listen.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Montori.
So, uh, just to go back, um, Mr. Chairman, um, on, um, Friday, we were informed by, uh, the Hanover group, that they were submitting an application to, uh, mass housing for their project at Ames Pond to construct, uh, 300 units of rental housing. Can you, is that just, just want to make sure, can you hear?
I still can hear you.
How's everyone else?
I can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay. So, just to go back, the, um, the town was notified on Friday that the Hanover group was going to be submitting, uh, has submitted, uh, an application to mass housing for a project of 300 rental housing at Ames Pond. Um, yesterday, uh, late, uh, you know, during the day yesterday, we received a letter from Mass Housing that they've received the application. They'll be reviewing the application, and they will be seeking input and comments from the town, uh, that need to be sent to them no later than Wednesday, October 13th, 2021. Mass Housing indicated to the town that their review, uh, involves an evaluation of the site, the design concept, financial feasibility of the proposal, and the appropriateness of the proposal in relation to local housing needs and strategies. Uh, and then as part of their review, they'll be soliciting comments from the local community, and that includes from local boards, local officials, and other interested parties. Application was sent to all of the department heads, uh, which included the, uh, school superintendent and business manager, uh, for their review and comment. It was also sent to the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, conservation commission, uh, board of health, uh, local housing partnership, and the open space and recreation committee, uh, for their, um, input and comment. And all comments are due back to my office no later than September 22nd to allow us an opportunity to compile a letter, uh, back to Mass Housing. Um, the, uh, we have, uh, what we believe is a good framework and outline of a letter, uh, based on our experience, uh, in dealing with, um, 40B projects, uh, and working with the attorney that the board, represent the town, and work with the zoning board of appeals. Um, so we are, uh, off and running with this project. We have, uh, actually started the review prior to the application being submitted to Mass Housing. And, um, you know, any input and, uh, comments that the board has, um, uh, please, uh, provide me, and hopefully at the next meeting, uh, I'll have, uh, more information to provide the board on what the commentary is from, uh, departments, boards, and committees.
Okay. And, Mr. Montori, thank you very much, Mr. Montori. And again, our commitment from the board is we, uh, listen to the abutters and the residents loud and clear. You know, that's why we are, um, essentially, you know, I don't think we're going above and beyond, but that's why we put it on the agenda. Mr. Montori's speaking about it. We.
I can hear you, Mr. Grant.
Okay. Now, again, we, um, the residents know that, that we listen to a lot of concerns. Um, so, so all good. So why don't, I just, we're going to bring it back to the board, because listen, this is a very hot topic. This is the hot button of the community, and rightfully so. So again, we, um, we're going a little bit of, um, we're stretching. I, I guess, I don't think we're stretching our authority, but we're making sure we're listening and getting in front of it, um, you know, per the abutters and per the residents, because this is a hot topic. So I just have a couple of questions. What I'm thinking, uh, for the select board is that, um, September 28th is our next meeting, so that's going to be a little bit short of the September 22nd. Um, you know, so I don't know how we review that with the community or make, make that public if we don't have a meeting prior. I don't think we have to do it, but is there such a harm in putting that together to actually show the residents, um, we put together for a list of, I'm going to call it for a lack of better words, concerns or needs or wants based on the development?
So the September 22nd date really is an, Mr. Chairman, the September 22nd date is an internal date.
Oh, October 13th is the, is the, is the money.
October 13th is the date for mass housing. I, I use the 22nd to give, uh, the administration time to compile the information, to then talk to the Board of Selectmen about what has come in. What I would suggest is to have a special meeting, with that being the only item on the agenda. Uh, your next meeting, I believe, is the 28th. Um, there'll be probably other items on that agenda to deal with. So, uh, we can see as we get closer, if it's a light agenda, you can do it that night. But if not, just have a special meeting just to go over the, uh, comments that came in and finalizing, uh, just so the board is going to go into, uh, into mass housing. We'll invite, um, the attorney, uh, uh, that's representing the town, uh, to join us, uh, and go over everything in detail. Uh, and I would caution that, um, again, you, you want to put a very, uh, you know, thoughtful and concise letter together. Um, at that meeting, it'll be difficult to get input from, you know, you, you want to go over the input from the department heads. Uh, we understand some of the comments that I've received, some from the residents. We'll make sure those, uh, are looked at also. But, um, you want to come out of that meeting with your letter ready to go.
Yeah.
Okay. Right. So I think, uh, just a few more comments. Ms. Stronach will open up to the board. So I think that's, um, what's wrong with that? Having a special meeting just for this agenda item? Because like I said, it's a very, it's, it's the hot button of the town. We all know that. And we're doing what we have to do as a community. My question, Mr. Montori, is let's say we don't come up with the, uh, our concerns about the development, um, is, is, is mass, I'm just playing it out, because this is relatively new for a lot of folks and residents. Would the Mass Housing Authority go through their quote unquote due diligence or checklist for a community based on a build of this, based on a bill, whether it's small, middle, or, or large in this particular case?
Yeah, they'll, they'll do their due diligence. I'm not sure how, you know, we'll, we'll have another bite at this apple when the ZBA, if, if the application ends up going to the ZBA once it goes through Mass Housing. So even if we don't get every single comment and every single item into Mass Housing, we'll still have another opportunity to review it, uh, when we go through, uh, the ZBA process, because at that time, we'll have more time to get peer consultants involved, look at our infrastructure and more things that come up that we want, uh, looked at further, that we won't have, uh, as maybe as much time as we would right now. So there is still going to be opportunity down the road. I, you know, Mass Housing is going to do their review, uh, but I, I don't anticipate them making much change to the, to the application. But we'll get our, all of our information on the record.
Okay. And that's all we can ask as a community and town, is to kind of list our priorities, our concerns, put those in front of the Mass Housing, and ultimately, uh, keep me honest here, again, and I'll open up to the board. And then the ZBA would kind of weigh everything, what the Mass Housing recommends, what our community recommends, and kind of, I mean, they're ultimately, they're, they're the voting body, not the select board, not the planning board. It, it kind of would land on the ZBA's lap to make that decision, uh, based on all the information.
From all of the departments, input from Mass Housing and everyone else.
Okay. So let me open up to the board, and I always break the rules, because I know this is a hot topic, and I might break the rules and open it up just because it's to the residents quick. But how about let's open up to the board? I talked enough about this, uh, but I just wanted to get some insight. Any questions from the board?
Um, I have one, uh, request, that, um, the town manager has a webpage set up to, um, solicit emails from residents who'd like to send in written comment to contribute. Just put that as a news and announcement on the front page, and then assist that link. They can send it in. It'd be good. And then let folks know on social media and wherever else is apropos. Send it out to the local papers. People want to send in their app, then, you know, they can get out everything out that way. And.
Another vehicle.
Yeah, thank you very much. This is very detailed, and I appreciate, um, all of your information, um, Mr. Montori. And, um, I think a separate meeting is apropos.
Yep. And that was our commitment to the residents as well. So, uh, perfect. Any other questions, concerns from the board? Okay. Because I said, I'm a rule breaker. I know there's folks. Would anyone like, again, which I would like to just to be quick, but would anyone, does anyone have any, uh, quick questions or comments from Mr. Montori for the board?
From the public?
Yes. Okay, please. Just at the podium, please, and name and, name and address for the podium, please. And again, we'll keep it short. I'm breaking the rules, but this is very important for the community, so that's why I'm breaking the rules.
Um, name is Kenneth Alley, 100 Cottigan Road in Tuxbury. Just a very quick question. The application, um, was, was, of units, right? It wasn't 300. It was for a range of what, 260 to 300?
Yes, so the application did have a range, but the letter from. Yes, so the application did have a range, but the letter from Mass Housing mentions 300, so they may have taken a number at the high end.
Okay, that's about as far as I can go with it.
Thank you very much.
Love O'Brien, 110, I will be brief. I just want to, I've been in contact with a lot of input from these folks here in the audience, with, with town management, and I personally, I know they do as well, appreciate the support and consideration would be given, and we hope and anticipate that it will continue until the final decisions are made. One quick question I'd like to ask about, which is reference to the Jones Farm sale. The, there was probably 30 or 40 subsidized housing units that were waived through the fee, the fee and loo program. Now that it has changed hands, can, can we go back as a town and say, all right, you gave the prior owner the waiver, does that waiver carry on perpetually, or does it start fresh? Because I think that's something that I personally need clarification on, and it's an opportunity that, that we've, more of these things occur, are, again, I'm a big advocate of our, our fees and loo are the big reason why Hanover is aggressively approaching Tewksbury to put in 40B apartments, and I'm just wondering if we have a way of recapturing any prior fees and, fees and loo decisions, as ownership of the property changes. Don't expect an answer here, but I, I'd like you folks to carry it through the compadres. Couple of questions I have is, Mr. Town Manager, the letter that Mass Housing sent you on Monday, or you received yesterday, is it possible that I got a copy of that?
Of course.
Okay.
Of course.
Thank you.
I'll send it to you in the morning, is that okay?
That'd be fine. The department reports that you, you suggested, you've mandated your department heads to turn in on September 22nd, may I also get a copy of them that I can distribute to the group that I'm involved with? Okay. You mentioned a select person, Wellman, about a webpage for people we putting information in. Would it be an open webpage that if somebody submitted something, I would be able to see it online, or it just be, it wouldn't?
That doesn't work that way.
I think ultimately it would be combined, you know, if it's not a duplicate, I think it would be combined in our overall.
Doesn't work that way, so it's not an, it's not an.
No.
Vehicle of communication.
No. Believe so, Mr., that's not the problem.
It's a way of outreaching the public, and someone may make a suggestion or have a response.
I know what you're saying, Mr. O'Brien, but then it turns into Facebook 101, and that's the last thing.
And, Mr. Chairman, I manage the website for another town, it's the same, exact same product that we have here in Redding, and it just doesn't work that way. It isn't a message board, it's just a web and email.
Well, I don't want to be disrespectful, but we're not talking about Redding, we're talking about Tewksbury.
Uh-huh, and I manage the system, and I understand how it works, and it's not possible to do that, so it just has that closed email functionality.
I said that because I've seen other public meetings, they're talking about this town, this town, this town, and I think these public meetings should be restricted to zip code 01876, and not other towns and buildings, so, thank you. No direction on you. The other question is, it was going to be, the, there was, and I guess the, it's the same answer, the bylaw committee was also, as part of their outreach program, also want to have like a webpage as well, so I was going to ask if that webpage for the bylaw committee would also be accessible to all, but you've already answered that question.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the zoning bylaw committee did not ask for a webpage, they asked for an email for residents to communicate their concerns, and that email has been in existence for, I think, at least three or four years, maybe longer, and we verified at our last meeting that it was still operational. So, there'll be no changes, no webpage, it's an email address only.
Okay, and one other question, Mr. Town Manager, again, as part of the hearing in the back room, what are the, the number of housing units we have, it was 1291, was that what I correct?
12,139.
What's it?
12,139.
And is that affirmative? That's a fully audited, okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, that's what we have, that's what we have now for data, I can't say when we get the final, formalized information, that it won't change by a few here and there.
Okay, any more residents? Again, now we just want to keep it short, that's all. We're going a little bit beyond, but it is an important topic, so.
Good evening, 54 North Street. I would just like to get on the record that I would really think it would be advantageous to the residents if, now that the zoning bylaw committee is meeting again, and re-tweaking, or whatever they're going to do with the bylaws, if you would reach more people, if those meetings could be televised, and I would respectfully ask if there's, ask if there's any way that that can be done so, to reach more people that might not go to a meeting, but would definitely watch it on the YouTube channel.
Very good.
Thanks.
Very good, thank you. All right. Okay, thank you very much, again, see that, we just want to get all the input, and we set it from day one, please, and then we'll wrap it up.
Nick Agnusie, 150 Cottigan. This is my second time in this room in 42 years, so you know, like you said, it's a hot button issue. I just have a quick question, then. Do you guys know anyone who doesn't wear a hard hat to work that is for this project? Because I haven't met anybody, and I'm going to ask him around, so, just wondering. I can't find anybody. Have you guys met anybody that's pro apartments in Tewksbury right now, that doesn't wear a hard hat to work?
Well, I think it's a loaded question, I think there's a lot of concerns, I guess I'll say that, but at the end of the day.
Yes, I know, really. Haven't met anybody, yes or no? I mean, I'll be honest, like, I haven't met anybody, so it's like, it's not like, I can't find anybody, it's like, yeah, like apartments in Tewksbury, let's do it.
No, I'm with you, I'm with you, so. I used to say 30,000 residents, now I'm going to say 31,000 residents, you know, that's my mantra, but at the end of the day, I hear you loud and clear, but at the end of the day, you know, this is, this is, this is moving forward, so let's say your answer's no, at the end of the day, it's moving forward, now we have to play ball with them, it's in our best interest, because it is moving forward, so I guess I'm with you, but also, if we don't take the steps we're taking, and we're taking some pretty aggressive steps through the board, and like you said, we're not the authority, you know, but we do have outreach to the residents, and I believe in, again, our board has made it crystal clear, and, you know, we're doing all the right things, so we have to play ball with them, that's what we're doing, we're going through the process, and I think that's what we have to do as a community, and that's, you know, because our backs are against the wall, so the more we can get from Hanover, to make sure that when this does go up, you know, because it's, you know, I, just for me personally, I think it's, we have to make sure we do everything in our power to make sure we document everything and put our asks up, so I don't, I'm not trying to, to answer on your question, but I'm just telling you, you know, the path forward we have to take as a board, as a community, and I think we're doing that, so. I'm not trying to be a wise, you know, a wise guy.
I'd most rather be honest, it's straightforward, so it's not popular, like, at the January meeting, we proved that it's not, there's no money in it for the town, in fact, it's a loser.
We heard all, we heard, yep.
So, you know, we're basically going to pay for it, it's not popular, so I just can't find any pros to this, besides, I'm just, was hoping you had a pro for me, that's all, I'm just, that's all I want, really, is for you to say, yeah, actually, there's a great deal of people that think apartments is great for the city, that it, you know, does something positive, that's all.
I'm with you.
I was hoping for that, but I didn't, I didn't think, I've been asking, I've been looking around, and even though it's not going in their backyards, they still think we have an overwhelming abundance of apartments in Tewksbury, and, you know, last thing we need is more, regardless of my backyard and all.
I get you, no, I get you.
So, in this situation, I know that, was it that planning board, you know, saying, oh, you should have done this, you should have done that, it's, you know, goody-two-shoes, it's your fault.
No, like I said, I'm with you, yep, and we put the over mic in, like I said, we're doing all the right things as a community and as a town, to ensure, at the end of the day, you know, we, we put ourselves in a good position, you know, in working with the developers. I don't have a better answer for you, and I'm not trying to be a wise guy, but that's, that's what we have to do, so.
And I understand, I'm, I'm in a bad position, because, you know, Mr. Martell.
All right, I don't want to, you said your point, it's for the record, I want to move on.
Well, you were engaging me, so I had to keep going.
All right, all good, well, I disengage, I disengage. Like I said, we heard you loud and clear, really.
Yeah, okay. I had something else, but I lost my train of thought, so, that's all that did. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last call, last call. Okay, okay, so I'm going to bring it back, let's bring it back to the board, so, thank you for the board for allowing me to do that, you know, I think it's, like I said, I'm preaching what I say, I'm listening to the residents, we're all listening to the residents and to the abutters, and trying to make that loud and clear, so hopefully, hopefully folks realize that. So, let's bring it back to the board, I think we have minutes, minutes, some minutes for approval.
To make a motion to approve the minutes on March 23rd, April 21st, and May 11th.
Okay.
All in 2021.
So, we actually have three sets, right? March 23, April 21, and May 11.
28, I think? Am I reading that wrong?
23, May 23, March 23.
23rd, April 21st, and May 11th.
It says 28 on the minutes.
Yeah, the minutes say 28.
Yeah, the agenda says 21, and the minutes say 28.
My apologies.
So, I didn't look at the, I looked at this and not at the agenda, so.
Agenda, and it would be April 28th.
There we go.
Thank you for that.
Second, second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask my sister selectman to amend the motion? I'm going to abstain from March 23 because I was not on the board, but I will participate in the other two, so if we could take those separately.
Sure.
Same deal, Mr. Mackey, okay.
Thank you. I will make a motion, are you going to start this over?
You do.
We do. I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes for March 23rd, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Alls in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any other additional motions?
Abstain, for the record.
Abstain.
Okay, it's three to, three to, three to, three to 002, so the motion passes. Ms. Stronach, what do you got next?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes for May 28th, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Alls in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Aye, okay, I'm sorry, 5-0, okay. Ms. Stronach, anything left?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of May 11th, 2021.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, alls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, 5-0 unanimous. All right, it brings us, anything else, Ms. Stronach?
I was just going to say, we continue to work on the minutes.
Very good, progress.
We are.
We are getting it.
Progress. All right, it brings us to board member reports, how about Ms. Wellman?
Couple of things, really briefly. NIMCOG has multiple positions open that they're hiring for, I think they're hiring five positions right now, which is a lot for that, that board, including the executive director and the assistant director, and so that's occupying quite a bit of the time of that committee. Last Saturday, I believe, the Route 38 paving, resurfacing project went out to bid this past Saturday, so that will be awarded, and then they'll be doing some design work and so forth, and contracting work over the winter, and then roadwork on Route 38 should begin in the spring. Knock on wood, so that's exciting. And then, secondly, the Fall Town Cleanup Day will be on Saturday, October 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Residents may pick up bags at Town Hall anytime that morning, and collect trash, and then take it to the DPW. This cleanup will also offer tires off-rim collection from Massachusetts Mosquito Control, and a clean clothing and accessory collection by the Epilepsy Foundation. All items have to be in reusable condition and bagged. Cleanup is also accepting food pantry donations, will happen at the DPW at 999 Whipple Road. Please visit the town website for more information, and that's what I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. How about Ms. Stronach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The elementary building committee met on September 9th, and the project's moving along very well, and September 11th, the Fields House opened for opening day. I just want to say that the sound system is amazing, I was very happy to hear that, and I just want to thank everybody on that committee that's continuing the work, and the abutters for all of their input, helped make that project run so smoothly. They did have a meeting, a walk-around with the abutters, to talk about the water drainage system, understanding that meeting went very, very well, and again, just, it's really important that we're listening to people, and I just want to appreciate the town manager and his staff always making time for that, because it's important. And then the events committee is meeting Thursday night at 7:00, and the Fall Festival is September 26th, so it's right around the corner, and that will be from 12:00 to 5:00 down at Livingston Field. Lots of really interesting food trucks will be at that event that I am very excited to participate in, in some really kind of old-time activities. And then I want to remind everybody that on September 24th, at the senior center, and I would really encourage our residents to go and participate in that. And that is all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. How about Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'll note is the zoning bylaw subcommittee met last week for the first time since the town meeting in May. The committee's newly reconstituted, two planning board members, I'm joined by Mr. Mackey, representing this board. We have two residents, and now we have the building commissioner, so we have a very aggressive schedule, a thought process, and the goal of the committee, as it formed last week, was to work towards presenting the zoning bylaw change, with whatever modifications are developed, to town meeting next May at the annual meeting.
Okay.
So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Mackey, what do you got?
Mr. Johnson did a great job of going over the zoning bylaw committee, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I forgot one thing.
Okay.
My apologies, but I do have one more thing tonight, sorry, and that is that the, we received no bids for the consultant, for the local housing partnership, and I just think it's important for residents to know that we did not receive any, so, I wanted to make sure people were aware of that. It's disappointing, but.
Perfect, and I'll just, and that's, you're good, Ms. Stronach?
I am.
Okay, I'll just conclude as far as the Tewksbury reuse, the Tri-Hannah North Street reuse committee, we're planning to come in front of us, September 28th, that's our next meeting, and essentially what the committee's doing now, I'm going to call it a dog and pony show, we're going to go to all the different boards, committees, department heads, and just say, listen, we have a blank canvas, throw bylaws out the window, because sometimes bylaws, zoning bylaws, can restrict what we may or may not be able to put there, but we're going to come in front of all the boards and committees and department heads in the next two months and say, hey, if you had a wish list, so I want to get your gears going and think, you know, if, what would you do with the space or the reuse of North Street? And again, whatever we come up with, this is only a wish list. Ultimately, we'll vet all the different options, see what's best in town, and ideally, whatever we suggest as a committee, it's going to have to go through town meeting anyhow, so we're not making decisions, but we're going to really corral all the different thoughts, what we could put there, and we'll see what we can come up with as a committee, and my hunch is we could have anywhere between three to five to maybe 10 sound recommendations, we'd vet those out through our board. we'd vet those out through our board and ultimately put some options down the road, you know, through, like we always do, through town meeting, to say, hey, let's take some votes. So stay tuned, again, next meeting, get your gears going. We'll do a very short presentation on what we know about the parcels, but I don't really want to go into, you know, dolls and, we'll highlight a few high-level things, but we just want to really just get the, everyone's gears going, open-minded, blank canvas, what would you do if you had Tinkerbell dust? Makes sense? So looking forward to it. So, and I know the committee's looking forward to it. So I think that's all I had, so with that being said, I look for, Mr. Montori, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I forgot one thing, like my colleague, Ms. Stronach, so you reminded me. I wanted to take a moment to thank the 9/11 Committee and the attendance of our residents and our firefighters and our police department, who, it was a tremendous turnout on Saturday for the 20th anniversary of those attacks, and it was, it was great to see a lot of familiar faces again in the community come together for that remembrance, so, but particularly the service of our police to make it a special day. So, thank you very much.
Great call out, you just, thank you very much, great call.
For miss, not mention.
Very good, yep, great, great call out. Mr. Montori, anything on your side?
No, the, just the town, special town meeting warrant's been uploaded to the website. If anybody's interested, it's available for review. The warrants have gone to the printer, should be mailed out within the next week, and special town meeting is October 5th.
All right, very good. With that being said, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion, and I have a second. Alls in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, good night.